Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Auburn zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday, February 15th, 2018. Before I begin the meeting, is anyone recording this evening by any chance? Okay, hearing none, seeing none? Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion, motion open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have our first hearing this evening, 7:00 PM. Applicant Mattio Gentili requesting a variance under section 3.2.2.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow single-family residential use on property located at 11 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map one parcel 31, as the applicant present. Sir, if you could approach the lectern, introduce yourself, and kind of give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish.
Good evening, Mattio Gentili. I live at 11 Southbridge Street here in town. I'm calling up, I'm here about 11 Southbridge Street. I bought the property a number of years ago to turn into a real estate office, and I did. Then I closed the business, and I leased it out to a friend who came in front of the board to get a special permit as a mixed use. Since he left last year, I've been trying to sell the property and marketing it as commercial. I've gotten very limited interest. Marketing as a potential mixed use, very limited interest. Most of the people who come say, geez, the lot size is just way too small to do any kind of commercial application. So I'm here to ask if you consider a single family. So I'm going to give you a little history of the property. It was built in 1896, and for its first 111 years, it was a single-family house. 2007 to '12, it was a real estate office, and 2013 to '17, it was a mixed use. The problem that exists on a property is it's only less than 9,000 square feet of land area. I have a six-car parking lot, but for anyone who, the few people who've even inquired about it, they said, yeah, that we need a dozen or a couple dozen cars to work our business out of here. So it looks like a house, three bedrooms, one and a half bath, and I think that would be its highest and best use.
Okay. I'm just going to go around. Mr. Chacolo, do you have any questions?
If there are any butters, I'd like to reserve my comments until after I hear a buzz.
Okay. Mr. Marin?
Ms. Chairman, if I may, before I begin to question, I wonder if we would need to bring Karen forward as a voting member.
Yeah, okay, so actually, you're right.
I just thought about that, so I just did a first from a housekeeping item.
Mr. Cussy is not with us tonight, apparently, so our alternate member, Karen Blaze, will be coming up. She'll be acting as a full voting member this evening, just for the record. Thank you, sir.
No worries. Thank you, sir. I thank you for being here. So, looks like the house is a house, was a house, prior to a business being occupied there. I think my challenge, it's more of a statement than a question, but my challenge is that requesting a variance, we'd have to take a look at what the rationale for a variance would be specifically. And couldn't you move forward as it's a residence now? And someone come in, purchase it, and live there? I mean, it's a mixed-use determination now, correct?
No, that special permit was with the last occupant, so that permit stayed with him, and when he left, that ceased to exist as a mixed use.
Right, okay, and that's my point. So I would assume that special permit permitted the property as a business and left with him, correct?
No, it's highway business zone, so it's by right can be some sort of business. With a special permit, it could be a mixed use, meaning the business part was allowable, and they gave him special permission to reside there also. So it was, the request was to live there. That was the change in his request.
Okay, so that left with him?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you very much for clarifying this. So Caleb, if you could just help me straighten this out from my own head. The use on the property right now is business use only, restrictive?
It's a business district. I believe the property's currently vacant. I don't think there's any...
Right, but the property couldn't be occupied as a residence right now, based on it being in a business district?
Not without a variance, correct.
Without a variance, okay. All right, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Ms. Chairman, I'm going to reserve any additional questions for the buzz.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blaze?
I have no questions.
Ms. Roach?
I just have a couple. I assume in that area, it's town water, sewer?
Yes.
No septic, no well, okay. And then, just about the interior of the property, so you had the tenant that got the variance and used it as mixed use. Is it, does it have a full workable kitchen?
Yep.
Bathrooms?
Bath and a half.
Okay, and then you said already three bedrooms, and plenty of parking, of course.
When I purchased it to turn it into a real estate office, I mainly ran cable and telephone connections, and left everything else the way it was.
Okay.
No wall movement or anything like that.
And you don't intend to, if we allow the conversion, you don't intend to live there, you intend to sell it?
Correct.
Good. I'm good for now. I'd like to also hear from a butters, if any.
Okay, do we have any butters present? Ma'am, if you'd like to speak, if you'd just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Maureen DuBois, 15 and 19 Southbridge Street. He's correct, it was a residential home for many, many years. He turned it into his real estate business. Then you people gave the variance to his tenant to live in the house, to run his landscape business, and to be honest with you, the place was a pigpen, was the talk of the neighborhood. So do we want to see that again? No. I would prefer to see another residence back in there, and it would be more conducive with the rest of the neighborhood. The going back and forth, back and forth, gets a little old. I think it needs to be decided, is it going to be commercial, or is it going to be residential? But I don't have a problem with it being residential. We would prefer to see a residential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, if I may, as a follow-up, and I think just from a historical perspective, I'm hoping that maybe we could even simplify this further. The variance, was it a variance or a special permit that would have been granted previously to go through business?
Previously, a special permit was granted for the mixed use.
So not a variance, a special permit?
Correct.
Would that special permit, as we've approved them, would that go with the owner or the tenant?
It went with the tenant. I recall the hearing, it was a landscaping company, locally owned. He wanted to reside in there and keep his vehicles outside in the parking area, and his equipment. It was given a special permit at the time, that would be understood that it would be, the special permit would vacate if he had chosen to not purchase the residence, or if he moved out.
So it was tied to the tenant?
So it was tied to the tenant, correct. Because the tenant came before the board and asked for the application.
Right, and even a special permit now would also be tied to the current owner, and he's indicated he'd want to sell it, which I'm assuming is why he's asking for the variance.
Yeah, well, that was my question, though. When we typically approve these, it would be approved for the owner, not a tenant.
If I could, through the chair, generally, I would agree with Ms. Roach. A variance would go with the property, even if it's transferred. Special permit is generally issued to an applicant, not the property. The variance would go with the property, no matter who it's transferred to.
It'd be recorded, they'd record the variance at the registry deeds.
That would eliminate any back and forth?
Correct.
To be flipped back in.
Well, it would allow it to be, it would allow the variance for the time being. There really is no way to, we can't prevent it from being back and forth. Anybody has the right to come and apply for a permit to change it 20 years from now, but the variance would run with the land until...
Until someone would challenge.
A new issue, a challenge came up, yes.
Thank you.
I think, I mean, that's my understanding.
I would agree with that.
Ms. Chacolo, any questions now?
I do have a question of the applicant. I'm sure everybody would want to hear your answer, that's why. I'm interested to find out just what grounds you would propose for the variance. Saying that you could sell it as a residence is not enough.
Well, basically, the problem with the property, selling it, and I've had it on the market for quite a while, and anyone who's approached me and asked questions about it, has looked at it, and there's only been a few for the commercial or the mixed use. The biggest issue is there's not enough land area for parking. So it's a hardship for a business that needs more than six cars.
But you are asking for a single-family use, so you want to switch it back, and you're saying parking is a hardship, which is, that's a stretch.
Parking is a hardship for, no, for a business, not a residence. Most residents have a couple of cars.
Right.
But a business, I think that's the hardship to the property, is there's not enough land area.
Yet, it wasn't a hardship when you had it as a real estate business?
Yeah, a real estate office doesn't have a lot of customers coming and going. It's normally a few agents in and out of the building all the time, so it's not a high-parking business.
Well, the hardship that you're proposing, I'm not saying it isn't a hardship, but it's not enough. We clearly have certain mandates that we have to go by. There are three specific criteria that should be met. You, if you decided you wanted to make a stretch and say that the parking as a business, the parking affected you, that might have something to do with one of the three criteria. But there's nothing I see with the topology, except for the fact, and to me, it's a stretch, we have other board members here, except for the fact that the lot is the lot, and that topology is a stretch, may get you into the, get you admission to where we can consider the other things for a variance. So what I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Mayow, is it weighing on that?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I wanted to look up something very quickly, but I don't have anything further at this time.
Okay. Ms. Blaze, or Ms. Roach?
I don't have a question, it's just a statement. I did get to view the property, and it does have the feeling more of a home than a business, per se. I couldn't see running, you know, a large business out of it at all, that size. I couldn't see running, you know, a larger business with a lot of traffic out of it, just in my opinion, getting to view the property. Thanks.
So to me, I see a point in terms of the topography and the parking, but I also see that it's a financial hardship. He's had the property on the market for quite some time, with no interest in purchase. It's a financial hardship in that sense. Granting the variance is not going to be a detriment to the public good, which is one of the other standards as well. We have a neighbor that came before us, saying they would prefer it to be a residential property. So I think, you know, even though that doesn't necessarily factor in, per se, it's certainly granting a relief to the neighborhood, preventing them from a business in the, at least for the foreseeable future, that may not be well-kept. That's how, at least I see it, anyway.
Ms. Chairman, the butter would like to make another comment? The butter would like to?
Yes, please, go ahead, ma'am.
Just so that you know, the two homes right there, both Matteo's and the house next to him, both of those homes have been vacant for months. They are now attracting vandals. There have been break-ins right next to his, and they probably attempted to get into his as well. So if it makes it easier to sell that house, to get it occupied, all the better for the neighborhood.
So her concern...
Excuse me, you said both of the homes.
Both his house and the person that owns the house next to him.
Fine, thank you.
And those concerned about some recent vandalism? I know, it doesn't apply to the variance criteria, but upkeep of the neighborhood too. Do I have any other comments on this?
I'd have comments, but not until we close the public hearing.
Okay, well, it seems like we have nothing left to be added to the public, so the motion...
Nothing left for the applicant.
I'm sorry?
Nothing left for the applicant, for me.
Right. Mr. Gentili, are you satisfied with your commentary?
Yes.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Close.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
So I guess I, variances obviously do present a little bit of an issue for us, because there are conditions. I think that the first condition, which is, I'm going to read it.
Yep.
Circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, topography, that especially affect the property for which a variance is sought, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which the land or structure is located. So, in my opinion, he absolutely meets that. The lot is really small, it, no business. I've been looking to buy a business in this town for almost a year. I wouldn't even think about that one. It's no way big enough, there's not enough parking. So for me, I think that one is like, that's the first one I would check off, frankly. Facts showing that a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, so it doesn't prevent us from considering financial, will result from the literal enforcement of the applicable zoning restriction to the land or the building. He's had it on the market for a while. It's not like it's been on a week or two weeks, and now he, you know, wants to change it. So I think the financial hardship is there. Fact supporting a finding that the relief sought would be desirable and without substantial detriment to the public good. I mean, there is a neighbor saying they don't have any problem with it. It looks like a house from the outside. We all know that when something really is a detriment to public good, there's 50 people in the audience, and there isn't. And fact supporting a finding that the relief sought may be given without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. I mean, there are other houses in that area. So for me, that would, I mean, I think he meets all four, I guess. I just think sometimes if you look at each one of them separately, it's a little bit easier. If he was here, and the house was in a residential neighborhood, and he was trying to go the other way, I'd be a no all day. I don't think he meets the criteria for that. But for this, I don't know. For me, I think the four are there. But there's other members of the board, but I do think they're kind of hard to get a real good grip on, so it's better to kind of look at them separately.
Thank you.
Gentili, any comments?
My comment is that I disagree on the basis that the topology, what was just spoken of was the size of the lot, not, because it was small and so forth, not the topology of the lot. And I said that maybe that could gain admission to the other two criteria, when I originally spoke, but I don't say that it punches the ticket.
Okay. Mr. Marin?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think, and I appreciate Megan articulating kind of where she is with that. The first one isn't as a slam dunk, although I can see her point, but I don't see it being, you know, a topology issue, because the lot is the lot. It's a topology issue for certain types of businesses. The right business could make it work. The hardship of having it on the market for a certain amount of time, I don't know how much of that we should be weighing into, quite frankly. Did you find something else, Megan?
No, I mean, I just, it's very clear that it says financial hardship. So, I mean, but if you guys disagree that it's not financial hardship, it's...
I'm not saying I don't disagree, that's not what I said.
But per state law, and that does not qualify as, that is an additional factor, but it does not qualify as the factor for...
No.
...allowing it. And we've had many people come before us. I know one in particular on Oxford Street with, that was tough to place a tenant in, and it was for sale for a very long period of time. I don't know if everybody will be thinking of the same one I'm thinking of, that we finally found somebody to place in there. And I would sympathize with anybody in that situation, but I would not consider that a factor.
Okay. Do I want any further comments before I ask for a motion?
I would only offer that from a financial hardship, I think it's subjective, and I'm not suggesting that it's not, you know, to hold on to a piece of property for a next amount of time. I just don't know that that's the scope of what we should be looking at. But I also, I see the value in essentially making this marketable as a home in that neighborhood. I think that, you know, so I'd like, you know, personally, I'd like to see a way where we could, I just don't want to stretch, you know, the scope of the definitions, but I think that it, you know, if I step back from this outside of the variance, the variance elements, it makes sense that this be a house, and that this be sold as a residential house.
Would another special, Caleb, would another special permit cover this? Can we accommodate, without being able to, what I feel not back up a variance, can we take care of this and accommodate everybody by special permitting it? Back again?
The new owner comes.
Being that it was, you know...
Who's going to continue the line?
Or can we do this as a mixed use? We've done it, apparently, we did that before in a hearing. We could have, he can have his cake and eat it too, and issue another special permit to the owner.
I believe mixed use would be allowed under a special permit, but for a single-family home, a variance would be required.
However, we could accommodate him by a special permit, right?
Not for a single-family home.
Say it again, please.
Not for a single-family home.
It would be mixed use, right? You can choose to have the business or not.
The applicant's applying for a single-family home. And he applied for...
It would require a changing of this application?
He would have to apply for a special permit if he chose to do a mixed use.
And it wouldn't apply to the person that he's going to sell it to?
Could he leave the mixed use, meaning the business, could he leave that open? Does he have to have a business to go in there, if he's going to live there?
To be a mixed use, it's business and a residence.
But does he have to have it in place? I should, I correct myself.
If he applied for a special permit and then sold the property, the special permit would not transfer with the property.
That's the ultimate bottom line.
Right, so if he...
It's not going to give, he wants to sell it.
It's not going to...
Just like we said in the beginning, the special permit doesn't do him any good.
So the new owner would have to come before us again?
Yes.
The variance gets him to a place where he can market and sell as a residence.
Right, a special permit would be needed by the new owner.
Are we going to be back here changing the...
They'd be wishing that they were selling.
...to another, if it was another real estate office? That's neither here nor there, though.
Right.
Again, an applicant can come before us anytime they want.
Yeah.
They purchased the property, they can come before us for whatever they choose to seek. You know, to me, I think the totality of the circumstances here, you know, it's circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography. So to me, or means, it doesn't have to have all three of those conditions, it has to have one of the three of those conditions.
I think they are, if you read on, they are not mutually exclusive.
Right. And then I think we have a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and I think it's not a detriment to the public good. And I don't necessarily think in this case it technically derogates from the bylaw. It's just my personal opinion, as a member of the board. We have a butler that has come forth and is in agreement with it. So again, I think the totality of the circumstances speak to, in my humble opinion, moving towards the variance, but I...
Is this a supermajority, or unanimous?
It is.
Yes, no, it has to be, it has to be a four to one. If it was a three to two, the motion would not pass.
Ms. Chairman, just for argument's sake, because I do agree that certainly not a detriment in changing this to the neighborhood, and I'll take the financial hardship off the table for argument's sake. But the first point on topography or shape, so are we suggesting that based on the shape of this lot, and stretching that to the size, that it's not conducive for a business to go in there? Is that how you see...
That's how I'm interpreting.
And that's what I'm asking for, is I'm asking for your view on how you're walking through it.
I mean, I think like you had mentioned, the applicant mentioned, you know, if it was a law office, if it was a real estate office, where you have two or three cars at a time, obviously, it's been on the market for quite some time, nobody's shown an interest in that. You know, I mean, if somebody bought it and want to put a dentist office there, I'm pretty sure we would say no, because there'd be a dozen cars at a time, let's say, for instance. Again, I'm just applying random business models to it. It is a tough call, I think, but to me, I don't know, I think I've expressed enough of where I think it should go. I don't want to have any type of unfair input over the board.
I appreciate you sharing your opinion. I mean, I look at the scope of the first element, I think it does meet certainly one to two of four that have been, and I think the others are questionable, but I think that we have to just take a look at how we define those. I don't think it deters from the bylaw, I would agree with you. And I respect your view of looking at the shape as a size consideration. We certainly want to support residents being able to be, have viable properties and do what they'd like to do with them. I guess my concern is showing any favor toward, you know, helping any particular applicant lean towards the sale one way or another. Is there a business out there that they haven't captured that this might be attractive to? That's not our call.
I think if we approve, we're not showing any special favor. Me personally, I think you've all got a feeling where I stand on it, but as I said initially, that issue of topology, if I can stretch it a little bit and pull it, if it is elastic, and that's what we're here for, then I personally would say that I could consider the other two. There are three criteria, and it's not our bylaw, it's state law. And if I want to say I'm elastic on the first one, then I would say the other two weigh a lot with me, so that I can, like I said, you all know pretty much where I stand on it, but I could absolutely stretch my feeling on that and support it also. If we're all in agreement that we can be elastic a little bit, then I could support it.
Okay.
Find something else, Megan?
Not really. I mean, I guess if you look up topography as a definition, it does relate to shape and features. It doesn't, it's not just shape, it's not just the terrain, it's not just, it does have a pretty broad definition of the word.
So in your view, can that capture size as well?
Absolutely. And I think in relating to this particular property, for over 100 years, it was a house. If somebody wants to live in a business district as a house, how about it? It does look similar to a house. He has a kitchen. I would feel much different if he was saying, it's a conference room, there's one bathroom, and it's on a septic, but it leans way more towards a house than it really does a business.
Thank you very much.
I mean, that's just mine.
But it's relevant, and I think one of the reasons why we walk through, we walk through a variance...
Variances are hard.
Different.
They're hard.
And that's why we put it through the paces, and we poke at it, make sure that it's very little risk of being challenged, I think, and that's what, the only angst that we walk through. But as I go back to my primary comment, that I think that this is a house, and being able to provide that kind of support for a resident that's, you know, in a situation with a property that they're trying to move. I can see the elasticity of the first, in recognizing that we can kind of extrapolate that topography to size, and so I think we can go there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any further comments?
Thank you.
So do I have a motion on the application?
I'll make, sorry, I just want to find the thing. I'll make a motion to approve the variance under section 3.2.2.0 of Auburn zoning bylaw to allow a single-family residential use on a property located at 11 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., map one parcel 31.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And so I'll just go down the line here. Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Marin?
Approve.
And I myself approve. Congratulations, sir, good luck.
I just want to clarify the... I just want to clarify the, the number should be 3223 for the variance?
So, yeah, it does say 322.
I'm sorry, I read it wrong. Oh, no, it's, it's wrong on the agenda. Sorry.
So for the record, the correction, it's actually section 3.2.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws, just, I'm sure it's a typo in the.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My mistake.
Okay, so let's, let's retract that one, and we'll go back to the original section of 3.2.2.0 for the record. I apologize.
I apologize.
So you can see Caleb at some point, and, you know, the paperwork will be submitted to you and go to the registry of deeds, and I'm sure you're familiar with that process, so good luck.
Good evening, good luck.
Oh, you're right, it's the next one.
Yeah.
He was looking at that.
Can I hit you something? You really trying to get at me?
All right, so we're actually at 7:30, so we're going to move right to the 7:10 applicant. I apologize if I mispronounced anything. A Fransini Fonseca requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow a three-family residence on property located at 27 to 29 Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map 41 parcel 107 is the applicant present. Hi, if you could just approach the lectern, please, ma'am, introduce yourself and give us an overview, we'd like to do.
My name is Fransini Fonseca, you got it right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I am a United States Marine Corps veteran, and I have moved to Auburn in September of last year. I have purchased this home as a two-family, and I have decided to take care of my elderly parents. My dad is partially blind, and my mom has mobility issues. So I went ahead and applied for a home loan modification program through the RCAP solutions, which is a program in Worcester. They are still, I'm still in the process of applying for this program, but my idea is to modify my basement, nothing will be done on the outside, just the inside of the basement and transform my basement into a accessory apartment for them. I'm still learning with this entire process, I'm not sure if I'm naming properly, you know, everything here, but that will be my, my envision for this property.
Okay. Mrs. Chacolo?
Hi. It is currently a two-family.
Correct.
And you want to move your parents there?
My parents are currently living with me, they have moved in recently. I am trying to adapt them, just give a better quality of life for them, and I'm engaged to be married, so my family will be growing soon as well, I'm just trying to figure, figure out a living situation for them to be safe.
So why would you be needing a third unit?
Because the second one right now is above me, and it's currently rented, and it has stairs. I have had problems with my dad and my mom because they have to climb the stairs to go from the second floor to the parking lot currently, and the parking lot leads to the back of the house. The basement situation, they would be right there, the basement, I have some pictures that I, I don't know if you guys need it, but the basement door, it would have three or, yeah, three egresses, so two doors leading directly to the parking lot, no stairs. So that's the ideal situation, because my dad has had some incidents inside the house, it has fell.
There's, I notice in, in what you show in your packet, you have a driveway to the left of the house.
Correct.
There's also a driveway to the right of the house.
Correct.
Is that your driveway?
The driveway, so if I'm looking to the house, the driveway to the left of the house is my driveway, the driveway to the right of the house is the tenant's driveway.
Is the tenant's driveway.
Correct.
I see. I would feel, I definitely feel for your situation. I have an older mother also. I guess I would feel better about not even having to ask questions if you had some idea on paper of how you plan to renovate that. Usually we see that, but.
It's here.
I do have.
Drawn plan, yes?
It's second page from the back, I think. Do you know?
I have very back page.
I haven't got.
Yeah. If you'll allow me to approach you guys, I could give you.
Sure.
It just wasn't in my packet, that's okay.
I made some different notes. So this would be before modification, after modification.
Okay.
And also have other copies.
Okay. No worries.
This is after modification, this is the first and second floor.
Thank you. And this is downstairs?
Correct.
Thank you.
Those are upstairs, sorry.
And you have the two doors there. Is that, is this area where the stairs are? Is that where?
Connection to the first floor.
Like a little porch up top?
Right.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay, Mr. Aaron?
Ms. Chairman, I want to hold questions until we hear from my butters and have further discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Blaze?
Couple of questions. Press thank you for your service, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I definitely feel for your family, you know, it's hard to take care of your parents, I understand that. Is this currently zoned as a two-family, or is it a?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
An accessory apartment?
It's zoned as a two-family, including the tenant's apartment.
So when you purchased it, was the tenant there and already and stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
What's that?
What about, is it town water and sewer and all that stuff?
Town water.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to hear from some of my butters before I have any more questions. Thank you.
Well, thanks for asking about water and sewer, you knew I was going to go there. I hope so.
Oh, my God.
So.
How does that match up with this?
The upstairs tenant is there, you actually already have purchased it, you do own it, or you're working with RCAP to actually purchase it?
The property, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, I have already purchased it.
You have already bought it?
Yes.
Okay. And looking at the drawing that you gave us, there's going to be a living room, a kitchen, then there'd be one bedroom and a bathroom?
Yes.
Okay. And there is access to the outside at ground level, which is why you want your parents to be here as opposed to up at?
Correct.
At the top, okay. I don't have any other questions for right now.
Okay, do we have any of your butters present that would like to speak?
Okay.
Okay, I haven't seen none.
All right.
So since we have no butters present, do we have any further comments or questions?
Ms. Chairman, I was going to ask Caleb a couple of questions, just based on, on the, the history on this. So this is a two-family, and to go to a three-family, I mean, I guess my question is, what's the necessity of moving this in classification to a three-family? It's already a rental unit, and I understand that they're looking to put an additional apartment in, but, but this is already a multi-family building, so.
The bylaw designates two-family, and then once you go to three units, it goes to apartments.
It's based on units specifically?
And, and the bylaw does not allow accessory apartments in two-family homes, only in single-family homes.
Okay, I wasn't completely, thank you for that, because I wasn't completely versed in that. Go ahead, Megan.
Just same thing through Caleb, do you know offhand, I'm trying to look it up quick, but do you know what the lot size needs to be on a three-family?
Right.
I think it's 27,000 square feet.
I'm just, I'm looking for the grid, but.
That was my next question.
Yeah, I think it's 27,000.
She's got that, she's got 27,990, just for the record.
Mm-hmm.
So, I couldn't find it, though.
It looks to be 27,990.
And would be 27,000, I think you said, right, for a, they consider a three-family or a multi-family?
Yeah, at least, yeah. It is 27, so, so we're threshold there. Caleb, have you mended this property?
I thought it was.
I have not, and I believe it's 10,000 square feet per unit.
Oh, so it's 30, so she's, so she's 10 square feet shy, I mean.
The, you would have to go through the building permit process anyways, so you would be there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, in terms of plans and, yeah.
And for the apartment that's being proposed, the size?
720.
720.
720, right.
And we would not be, we would not be held to that restriction?
No, we're not.
No.
Because it's not accessory.
It's not accessory.
But I believe that just meets the criteria for, right on the money for accessory use anyway.
It does.
Just for the record.
It does. Should we, right, but you're right, that's accessory.
Well, I'll circle back, because we still have an open hearing for the applicant, so I'll also offer my thanks for your service, and my best to your parents, but I don't have any specific questions for you. So thank you very much for being here. Ms. Chairman, I don't have anything further.
Thank you. Ms. Blaze?
I have no other questions.
Ms. Roach?
Nothing for the applicant?
Okay.
Maybe a group discussion?
My question to you is, I see you have a pellet stove here. Do you have any other plans for sources of heat? Because I'm not sure your chimney would be able to support any additional heat being, you know, the chimney being modified. You have to have a separate flue for each heat source.
Correct.
Says heat for oil.
Right, oil, but it's going to have, that means it's going to have to come out of the chimney somewhere. So how do we modify that, or is it going, what's the plan for the heat, I guess, is really, I should probably keep it a little more general.
The basement, as in right now, is already being heated.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, it's just the garage portion that you guys see in, before modification, that's the part not being heated as in right now. The home loan program allowed me to replace the furnace to a more efficient one.
Okay.
That's part of the, the loan for that, so I would be replacing the furnace, which it will be my furnace, but it will be replacing, it will be replaced to allow an extra heating source to a place that already has the heating, pulling out of the same furnace.
Okay, that's just what my concern was, you know, as far as fire safety.
I have a question. My paperwork for the, I think this is the accessories card, it says 2930 for the living area, is that number correct for?
Oh, let's see here. So your total gross living, at least, area is 2,930 square feet, is what they're saying. So the first floor is, it says it's 1,838, the second floor says 1,092.
Okay, yeah.
So I would say that's probably, I mean, without actually going down and measuring the property, I would think it's probably fairly accurate.
Thank you.
So where, sorry, where is the furnace now? Like, and where will it be? It's in the basement, I assume?
So the house is divided into the basement that runs through the entire bottom, so below the house is divided into two. The part that I'm trying to renovate, it's the part already finished, and there is an unfinished basement section where the heater is located, the furnace is located.
So this is not the whole basement here that we see?
No.
Okay.
That's, that's, that part only covers, I guess I don't have a better way to show other than the accessories card, but it says unfinished basement and then finished basement.
Okay, you have a.
Have you approached the lectern, please, sir? You have to speak to the microphone.
Sorry.
That's okay, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Brandon Lopez, I'm from Leamester, Massachusetts. I'm Fransini's fiancee, and what she's trying to describe is that the original house that the found, that the house that the original, that was originally built upon, it's an older foundation, and then through some time, they made an addition towards the back, and towards the back is where the new foundation is. So there's two foundations. The older one, which is, you know, like rocks and cement mix.
Fieldstone type thing?
Yeah, it has the furnaces for, for the first floor and the tenant's floor, and where she wants to do the addition is where the new foundation has been made.
And that's poured concrete?
Yep, poured concrete, and where you see that wall dividing the garage and the separate area, the separate area where there's, there's, there's a pellet stove and then there's a wood stove. So that area's heated, it's finished, it still has a cement floor, but it's quote-unquote finished, and then just the other side is just a garage, and it doesn't have any sheet rock.
Okay.
But there's a wall that's insulated for that. I just wanted to clarify that, because.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have nothing else.
Anything else, gentlemen? Ladies? No?
Not for the applicant.
Okay, so the motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
My only hesitation is, which puts us in a little bit of a tough spot, because I don't know if we can actually limit this, but I'm all for this, I think it's great service, everything wonderful, but when it's no longer occupied by the parents.
I would want a special permit to expire.
When it's no longer occupied by the parents, I think we're in a different realm when we're talking about having a family unrelated on one floor, a second floor, a third floor, additional cars, additional, I assume the parents aren't driving all over the place, there isn't cars for them, but that would not be the case if this later on is rented to someone else.
More than enough room for, for what I saw?
Yeah.
I would have no problem fitting eight cars in it.
Between the two driveways?
Between the two driveways.
Because it's one and two, yeah.
And that, and you'd probably have room left over after eight cars.
Okay.
Is this area off-street parking exclusively? Like, they can't?
Yeah, I would think so.
It's actually right down the street.
Right down the street.
Right at the bottom, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say there's no, definitely no parking lot.
And it would be pretty hazardous, because with, you know, with the.
It's narrow.
Speed going down the hill, somebody parking the street.
Agree, I just didn't know if it was a, it was an actual restriction.
Right.
But, but given that, I would, I would agree with Ms. Chacolo, I mean, this affords a fair amount of parking, even if you consider a classic three-family, and even consider on each unit two cars. I mean, I, this, this actually would have.
Two or six, so.
This has more car space than a lot of three-families that have off-street parking.
Okay.
In my estimation.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's.
Yeah, I saw them both, I didn't really like, but if you guys think that there's applicant, I just, that's my only fear, after the parents are gone.
It's a good point to be raised.
It turns into a lot of cars.
Well, this is a special permit, so if the tenants change, we can put there that.
Well, if the owner changes. So if we give it to her, this special permit stays with her as long as she owns it. So if the parents are not there, she would have the right to rent it to someone else.
But, but.
Could we put that as a condition? Could we add that as a condition, or no?
I don't believe we would.
You don't have to condition it, because the special permit is only going to go with this lady.
Right, but that's what I mean, if the parents don't live there anymore 10 years from now, if she still owns it, she could rent that bottom unit to whoever she wanted, however many cars they had. But if you guys are saying the driveway is, is funny big enough, it's a good-sized driveway, then, then I'm okay with that. It's my only, it's only a one-bedroom.
That was my initial question, like, who owned, whose driveway was that on the road?
Right, and it's only a one-bedroom down there, so at most, you're right, what, are you going to have two cars? Because you can't really fit more than, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend conditioning it, but I think it's a good point raised.
Yeah, no, I'm good after the discussion with you guys, I'm.
Ms. Chairman, at the risk of being my fault for stepping out for a moment, was there a discussion on the floor that was speaking to an addition?
The applicant explained to us that there was an original foundation that's basically fieldstone and concrete mix, and then at some point in the past history of the home, a poured foundation was introduced along with an addition. That's all existing construction as is now. So the heating, as it was described to me, all of the heating, electrical, those types of things are in the original stone part of the foundation, and this apartment, if you will, would be in the new poured concrete foundation.[1743.42] So I think honestly, in my opinion, I like it a little better because they're, they're very separated.
Okay. Now, my, my apologies for asking either, but thanks for...
No, that's okay.
Thanks for bringing me up to speed for that. I appreciate it greatly. I, I guess my, because my question was whether or not I heard that they weren't changing the footprint of the building. And I want, when I heard addition, I wanted to just clarify that there's no exterior changes.
I was not aware that this particular picture that was shown, I, I just happened to assume that this was the entire footprint of the...
Yeah.
Right.
Actually, it's half of the...
But that's not...
Roughly half-ish, right, of the basement. So that's, this is the only thing they showed. Okay. Do I have a motion on the application?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a special permit under the Auburn zoning by law 3.2.2.3 for a special permit to convert the property into a three-family.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Blaze? Myself? Approved?
We don't need to say anything about permits. All that gets handled.
Well, no, because this will be the next step. That's what the Department of Inspection Services will take over.
We'll deal with all that, okay.
So you're all set? Congratulations. Thank you very much for your service to our country.
Thank you.
Can I ask what your MOS was?
6073.
Which is?
Aviation electrician.
Aviation electrician. Oh, fantastic.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Subify.
Thank you.
Yes, so that's my next step. So we have a somewhat of an unusual circumstance, not that big a deal, but we had a 7/20 applicant, Home Pro Mass., that had to have an address correction done, and it was not able to do so within the allotted time for public advertising. So this is going to actually move to March 1st at 7:00 p.m. for a special zoning board meeting because what we're trying to do is accommodate the applicant because it was a simple type of, you know, typo error in the office. So we're going to just straighten that out and fix it.
That's a Saturday, correct?
No.
No, Thursday, March 1st.
Don't scare me.
No, it's a Thursday, March 1st.
Oh, I know. Because of my...
Right. So that 7/20 applicant, that will be moved to 3/1/18, obviously held here at 7:00 p.m.
We'll buy your calendar.
Through the chair, if you just want to clarify the correct address for that?
Okay, sure.
Just in case there's any butters here for...
So the address was originally listed as 171 Packagog Street, Auburn, Mass. And the address that has been corrected, it's actually 171 Hampton Street. So you can see they're, they're right next to each other. Simple error. So if anybody has any public comment or concern, they can come up to the town hall. Okay. So on to, we have some decisions. 19 Mill Street, Longwood Development, 14 Brook Road, and 476 and 500 Luster Street. Sign those. And while those are being passed out, we also have... Coming our way.
Caleb's coming?
Yep. So we have the minutes from December 21st and January 18th.
We have no minutes.
You have no minutes for that? Okay, strike that. That's good. And our next scheduled meeting is March 15th, besides the first meeting. And these packets that you received at your desk when you came in, that is for the March 1st meeting. That's the modified application. Okay, so I didn't have to do that one. Go on this one. Absent and absent.
There's one more. Absent. Yeah, this is why, this is why I'm separate. Do I sign if I deny? That's Caleb. Do I still sign if I deny? Do I still sign if I...
She must have signed. Yeah, that's why I put the vote on.
I do, right, okay.
You still voted?
Right, okay.
Signing saying this was correct.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this one's clear.
Hey. I got you a stamp.
I have a short signature. I just flipped them over.
Let me see, yep, those are all yours to go? Jeez. That is yours. Thank you. That is correct.
But that's the one that we can't... I'm going to try it again now. Richard Cussi tomorrow. If he can come in.
Do you know where you can see him?
Did you hear from Rich?
I'm sorry?
Did you hear from Rich or no?
I did not, no.
Okay.
It's because, you know, that, because it has to be spied into...
Yes.
There you go. I believe that's the last one?
That's it.
Okay.
Sorry, I have like a problem. I have like a losing these so...
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Hold a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.